Okay.
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You made it.
Good evening, welcome to the November 8th, 2016 meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees. We are apparently without County Legislature Jill Tyner tonight. Pat, we never heard.
No.
It is election day. I don't think he's up for office, but probably otherwise accounted for. We'll start right with our treasurer's report then, Karen.
Okay. The treasurer's report is for the period ending October 31st. The general fund ended in the month with $22,200.72. The tax collector account ended in the month with $1,493,165.66. The water fund ended the month with $603,105.45. And the sewer fund ended the month with $686,147.86. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $65,609.07. In the water fund, $34,363.25. In the sewer fund, $20,0563.85. And one capital water system improvement bill for $5,907.78. A bond anticipation payment, interest only of $3,276.45. And escrow in the amount of $3,363.21. Also distributed a operating statement for the period ending November 8th. The CHIPS highway, I submitted the application for reimbursement for CHIPS in the amount of $83,060 for West Market Street drainage improvements, leaving a balance in the CHIPS of $50,009.13. Also remaining in that is the extreme weather reapportionment of $7,660. The adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Sewer Department liaisons and are presented for authorization. I prepared and sent out grease trap letters in September due back by October 31st. I prepared and sent out backflow device testing letters in October due back November 30th. And I will compile those and follow up with John Fenton and just report to him where we're at with what we've received back. I'm working on a capital asset and fund policy and both of which I will review with the village attorney before I present them to the board. Also, for the CHIPS, to increase the budget to actual, I'm requesting an increase in the revenue account $35,01.1 and an increase in the expense, the CHIPS expense at $51,1201.02 in the amount of $43,060.
So I'll make a motion to approve the amendment as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the water allocation distributions as presented except for there's one for $30 and change that we denied going forward, so.
I'll remove that one from the list.
Second. Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to accept the Sewer Department adjustments as presented.
Second. Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Karen, where are we at with the grease trap letters? Are they all up to date from Pete and their inspections? Are they, are these ones that are overdue or just routine?
Those are ones that routinely, that I just sent out routinely, but I will go through them and see which ones we did not receive back and let Pete know.
Okay. Do you need to be here for the bond form for the fire department?
Um, I can be.
For the fire truck bond?
Do you want to do it now?
Yeah, you want to do that now? We'll skip ahead.
Fire. Send the fire. The bond resolution.
So this has to go out to referendum? Okay, which would?
Well, permissive referendum. It just needs to be published and then a 30-day period for any comments and if there are no.
So we won't be able to do it until January then?
Right.
The January meeting? And we'll publish it after?
It'll be published tomorrow.
No, it'll be published.
Okay.
You can authorize the.
And then we have 30 days, but it'll probably will be after the December meeting.
It'll be published tomorrow. I have, I have to post it at six locations within 10 days of you making the motion and then it's 30 days.
After it's posted. From today. So 30 days from today? Then we can do it tomorrow.
I think it's 30 days.
I'm not sure what the date of the next meeting is though.
Oh, okay.
Don't have that in front of me.
December 13th.
Oh, so we should be good then? We could do it in December.
I mean, we have until, until June, but we're just starting the process early so that we can make sure we have the 30 days and have the financial advisor do what they need to do and the bond council do what they need to do.
Okay. So it looks like it'll work for this year.
Yeah. So I will make the motion to approve the bond resolution as submitted in an amount of $465,000 for the purchase of the fire apparatus.
Second.
Discussion.
So the bond is for the exact amount of the purchase?
No, I think the exact amount is 464,580.
Right.
However, they need to round it up by the 5,000. It's in 5,000 increments.
Okay.
When they go out to bond it.
Okay.
And is that something we can change at the last, when actually the bond payment is made?
Yes.
So if we wanted to make it?
If you wanted to go.
Make it 460 and pay 5,000 or something?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all right.
I mean, it's harder to go higher with it than it is to not bond as much, get the approval to bond 465, but then if you say, hey, we're gonna come up with 15 or whatever and make it.
Okay. And the cost of the bond council, you and I spoke about, and that's gonna come out of the?
Yes.
Was there about a $5,000 fee that?
Yes.
Will come out of the fire budget?
Yes. And I spoke with Kyle.
Kyle, we, okay.
Any more discussion?
Well, yeah, I have a question. There's one bond that's being paid off this year in the fire department. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So this kind of might be a wash.
That's why the timing was good.
Yeah.
Right, there's already a payment.
It should be less.
Just so the public knows.
Right? It should be less because the other was the ladder truck, which was much more expensive.
Right. And that's why we didn't tap into our fund. We wanted to bond this entire.
Right.
Truck and then continue to build on the fund for the purchase of another truck in a couple of years.
That's just so the public knows we're not adding a big expense that we haven't already been paying. It's kind of disconnect, continue.
Right.
Correct, the payment.
We're paying off one bond and taking out another.
Correct. But the budget, or the payment for that's budgeted.
Right, right.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
We have to do a SEER.
You can go on.
There's a SEER resolution as well.
Okay.
Right behind it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the SEER resolution as drafted.
It's just declaring yourself as lead agent and then it's a type 2, it's no impact.
Right.
What is this, where are we?
It's right behind the other one.
Oh, right.
So it's a SEER determination.
It's actually attached to it, Scott.
Yeah.
Close right into it.
Is there a second?
Second. Oh, sorry. Did you ask for it?
Any more discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks.
So we'll go back to police. There were 31 incidents in the town, 120 in the village. Just checking to make sure I'm on the right month. The numbers look familiar. 13 tickets in the town, 76 in the village, a total of eight arrests and 15 accidents. The speed trailer was set up on Route 9 near Asher Road. Looks like significant number of speeders. That was during the Hudson Valley Half Marathon, Full Foliage Half Marathon. Also set up on East Market Street during Sheep and Wool. Only 1,143 above the speed limit. Montgomery Street set up, uh, the 29th, was it? Yep. They had the half marathon, Sheep and Wool Festival, the Madagascar 5K and Halloween Parade in the village, events that the police covered. We got a couple letters of recognition this month for the police department. One thanking Officer Rivi for participating in the touch of truck event up at the library. Seems like the kids appreciated having a police car there. Another one from Major Nuzzo from the State Police, he's a Troop K commander, thanking Sergeant Dunn and the police department for their assistance during the wake and funeral of Sergeant Anthony Gentile last month. And the last one is a letter recognizing Officer Killian. He made a little boy's day on Halloween. Guess the little boy was dressed up as a police officer and Officer Killian took some time to spend with the, with the kid, so his mother sent us a thank you note recognizing his community service. That's it for police.
The fire report for the month of October, there were a total of 95 alarms for the fire department, 21 fire calls, 11 in the town, four in the village, and mutual aid two times to Rhine Cliff and four mutual aid calls outside of Rhine Beck. There were 69 EMS calls, 22 in the town, 35 in the village, and seven mutual aid calls to Hillside, three mutual aid calls to Rhine Cliff, and two mutual aid calls outside of Rhine Beck. There were also five motor vehicle accidents, three in the town, two in the village, and the ambulance did not respond to nine calls, therefore the response percentage was 87.84%. The fire department's operating year concluded on October 31st. The department overwhelmingly exceeded all past call volumes with a total of 1,001 calls for the year. And that year starts on November 1st and ends on the 31st. Call statistics for the year will be given at the December board meeting, so we'll be able to see where the increases were compared to past years.
I think that's 200 more calls than last year.
That's quite a jump. On November 16th, 16th, all officers will be attending an officer workshop at the 911 Center. And the department is currently preparing for their standby detail for Sinterklaas, and they'll have full crews on duty from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Respectfully submitted, Kyle Amy Chief and Chrissy Amy EMS Captain.
I just wanted to add, I'm working with the fire department on new ID cards for the, for the volunteers that will have an expiry, like, not an expiration date, but a timeframe so that it's a year calendar year so that if somebody presents the card as of January 1, they will have a date on it.
Sounds good.
Anything in planning zoning building you want to report?
Uh, no, nothing I want to report, but I do want to, I'll talk with the board about scheduling the public hearing for the, for the draft zoning changes.
Okay.
I mean, maybe we can do it now. It's ready. You were at the last meeting. The zoning commissions come forward with the corrected draft based on some final additions and some changes at the last meeting. So we have a draft that's ready and we're prepared to, to schedule the public hearing. But of course, we need to make that draft available, I think, prior to, so that.
Yeah, it goes out seven days.
Seven days prior. So I will, I'll work with Karen to make that available, because Karen has the draft. Karen McLaughlin has the draft of the zoning changes.
McLaughlin?
Oh, I'm sorry. McFarland.
Because usually it's in the clerk's office, but.
But anyways, well, yeah, they just put it together, so Colton just finished it up. So, but yes, so I will have her get that to you, and it's just a matter of picking a date.
And then, but as a board, we can get a final draft too, because the one we have has been out.
You can get it tomorrow. Sure, yep.
Great.
Karen can email it to you, or you can just, if you want to contact her and have her make you a copy, she can serve you.
So when do you want to set it for?
At this board's.
Try to do a separate night?
I think we probably should do a separate night.
So you want to do it this month or before the next meeting, after the next meeting?
So the 13th is the next meeting, Pat?
Yes.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we set it a week after the next meeting?
The 20th.
That would be the December 20th.
Is that too late?
Kind of close to Christmas.
That might be rough. Maybe the week before? The 6th?
The 6th is the Monday after Sinterklaas, right?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday after Sinterklaas.
I'd have to see if there's a, that would be if, that's the first Tuesday. Is that a planning board night?
It is planning board. Yeah, because I have my calendar.
The majority of the planning board would be here.
You want to do the 15th? The Thursday after the?
Oh, the two days after the meeting? That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
You want to do it the Thursday before the meeting?
Sorry.
So that would be the 13th, what's that, the 12th?
That'd be the 8th.
It's the 8th?
What about Wednesday? I mean.
There's DA court at 4 o'clock, but.
Well, that's fine.
They're usually out.
Want to do that December 8th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so let's tentatively set that at 7:00.
Okay.
And then let me just work with, make the commission make sure everyone's going to be available, and Karen.
So you got a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we establish the public hearing for the changes to the zoning code for public hearing scheduled for December 8th at 7:00 PM.
Second. Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Highway. Russian, uh, they're saying they're behind on a leaf pickup, but it does continue. We don't have the quotes for the, for the plow, right? That they want to buy?
It was on the bottom of his.
Right, but we don't actually have any.
This is all I have.
Okay. I talked to him today, told him we need those quotes to make sure we're looking at the comparable things, right? Do you have to see it as always?
Exactly right.
So I guess that's it for highway, water?
So total water treated is 13,281,000 gallons as compared to 15,860,000 gallons last month. We're still pursuing repair of the Colorado. We've been trying to work with the state bid process. The process has kind of changed. It's no longer listing of trucks in there that you can just go look. You have to fill out a form, send the form to a dealership, and then get the quote. So we're just having a little bit of trouble dealing, working with the website to get the form. I may ask for some help to do that.
What were they looking at as a vehicle to replace it?
A new truck comparable to this one.
Okay.
That's what we're looking for.
Another small.
Another small pickup truck, yes.
Do you know how many miles are on this one?
73.
73,000?
Yeah. It was 70-something.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's.
That's from the used engine.
73 on the used engine. Okay.
Well, that was the used engine, but this one had like 70,000-something on it, which was what we talked about last time. And the value of the truck was, was equal to the value of the replacement as we looked up last time. So that's why we're going to look for state bid to see what's out there. So that's still in process. I'm still working on a project that Karen and I are working on and getting the municity software moved over off of Chrissy's server downstairs to make that machine freed up and put that on the server across over in the town. Working on, to make that, and then when that happens to actual, the water department personnel will actually be able to read meters, enter the data real time, and be responsible for the data, and billing will occur here. So it kind of streamlines the process, makes it much more efficient for the office and for the water department. So that's ongoing. We've completed distribution system. We've completed flushing every year. We do a flush of the water mains, right? Using specific highway, specific hydrants to flush out the water mains. That work's been completed. Those, those hydrants are scattered throughout the village, out on Route 308 and in Rhine Cliff. So it's not all hydrants. I just want to make sure if you didn't see a hydrant being flushed at your location, it doesn't mean that it's not part of the hydrant test. It's to flush out the water mains is what the purpose is. We've continued to work on installing new radio meters throughout the village to do automatic readings, and Sunup has installed the meter at Thompson Maserello Park. I'm still waiting for completion certificate on that. We do not have that or the Board of Health approval for the testing of that. So more to come on that. And I'm working with John Fenton to get those documents. We did a tap on South, on South Street for the 138 East Market Street. It's that property that's right in between the two streets. The tap was on the South Street side. That was done, and there was a request to paint hydrants down to Woods Complex, and that got started. I don't think we've made a big jump, big progress in it, but we're getting started on painting some of those hydrants that are really rusted and look bad. Up at the Haly Reservoir, the Haly residents lost water for a few hours on October 27th due to a car accident. That was repaired as quick as possible and water was restored. Last month I brought up about the lagoon. One of the things with the lagoon is we keep three times a year dumping our sludge into the lagoon, and we keep dumping a lot of water and stuff in there when we need to clean out the lagoon. We don't have a good process for cleaning out. Suggestion was to, what can we, if we can use the facilities at the sewer treatment plant, we met with Howie and the sewer treatment personnel and decided that equipment's really not suitable because of the contaminants that come through it. We wouldn't be processing 50,000 gallons through there. It would be an intermediary, intermediary process at the water treatment plant and then just try to bring up some sort of sludge from the reservoir process, but we're not going to use that equipment.
Right.
We're going to pursue other alternatives there. So that's still an ongoing discussion to try to figure out what to do, but for a long term, it looks like the best thing to do is to figure out how to stop using the lagoon, put in a process to process whatever sludge comes out of it, and then work on, then cleaning up the lagoon as well, which has to be done. But I think we have to stop using it first, given the estimates that we've gotten for cleaning it and the time and everything involved, so. And on the water improvement project, no updates. I'm waiting for final plans yet, which are supposed to come out in December, so no news on that. We were also asked to test the water at the highway garage, which we did, the water department did. There was a high level, a little bit slight tick up in terms of the chlorine level, but that's kind of normal given the location where that is on, on the distribution system, but everything else was within limits, so the highway department water is good drinking water, like it the rest of the system, so. That's it. End of my report. Any questions?
Yeah, the painting of the hydrants reminded me of the painting of the door up at the, where are we at with that?
That's done.
It's done?
Yes, I should, sorry, I didn't have that report. The Haly Road door is painted. It's all cleaned up, looks good. Take a ride, yeah.
So that's pretty much maintenance up there done for the season, I would say.
Yeah, I think so. There's not going to be too much going on in terms of maintenance, yep.
All right. Howie, wastewater?
For the month of October, the wastewater that treated was 3.6 million gallons. Gallons of sludge that were processed was 45,600 gallons. Pounds of sludge processed was 4,850 pounds. Everything seems to be working okay at the wastewater department. I'll just give you a couple more highlights on the report here. Inspected all collection system throughout the village for grease and debris buildup, and they checked all the lift stations. They painted the steel structures at the Northern Dutch's Hospital Lift Station, and the Astor Home Lift Station was also painted. That's it for the wastewater department.
It's interesting to note, when you compare the wastewater amount that we process versus the amount of.
Water.
Water that we treat, you know, drinking water, this 10 million dollars, 10 million gallons difference between the two, just saying, it's kind of interesting.
Well, most of us have subjects as opposed to.
Right. Oh, that's right.
Isn't there, there's a formula too that goes into calculating the wastewater versus what was used on, what was processed from water, isn't there, because it's not a one-to-one ratio?
You mean as far as.
Waste water billing is based on metered water usage.
Right. On metered water.
Yeah.
Right.
They don't meter the wastewater.
Out to sewage.
But only a small portion of the village has, is connected to the sewer.
Right.
So committees, we got the tree committee. I don't know if the minutes are.
You sent a minute down to see.
They are, like it's an email?
Yep, the minutes are in here.
And by share.
They might be in that other packet.
And there's a couple of applications for tree removal.
Yeah, three requests, one for pruning the Fennel property on Center Street, removal.
No, here it is, I found it.
Prowl, which I'm pretty sure is already done.
So the, wait, the first one though, on Center Street, is that a removal or is that a pruning?
It's pruning.
Pruning.
Does it say pruning on it?
Yeah.
Mule property?
No.
Which one?
Fennel, Center Street.
Okay, did they, that form that we're talking about, has that been?
I haven't, that's what I was going to bring up at this meeting. I have not seen the form yet.
Okay.
I would like to see that as part of the process that we discussed. And it was under, it was my impression that the tree committee was going to do that.
Oh, is this it right here?
This form here? Yeah, but it doesn't look like there's.
No.
Any reasoning as to why.
No. This is not the form. Not the form we discussed.
What is this for?
It's the second part of the tree commi, uh, tree, it's the second page. That's, that's attached to.
Oh, the application?
Or the blank. Oh, okay.
You're asking about Fennel's tree?
Yeah.
There's dead limbs.
I know, but if you look at the application though, it doesn't, it doesn't say if it's a removal or if it's a trimming. Just, you may know that because she told you that, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I know.
So that form would be good because we could mistakenly remove a tree that maybe only needs to be trimmed.
Right.
So, yeah, we should, that's, that's a fairly simple, it's kind of like your form, Pat, you know, when you did your event and photography thing? We need a form like that.
Well, we had discussed it in.
Yeah, and the tree commission is going to work on it, right?
Correct. That's, that's my adjust.
All right, so maybe we'll, because we don't have the reasons on these trees, right? The mule one's not even on here.
That was.
There's not even a form for a mule.
There was, that was last month.
Oh, was it already approved?
The tree commission had approved it. You guys had it last month, but it didn't get addressed. You were going to go look at it.
Which one is that?
Where is it? Where's the mule? Where's the mule?
Chestnut Street, Muley, Chestnut.
Muley.
Yeah, I guess we need an address, because I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, well, I didn't give it to you again, because I was
Who's paying for these?
These are, in fact, so that would be the homeowner.
Property owner.
Okay.
All right, so let's get the, we need to have the reasons and the addresses and locations. We haven't looked at them yet.
No.
Yeah.
I have not.
We have the addresses on two of them, so we have them now
And you have mulays from last month.
We have this form?
Yeah, the tree application, yes.
Okay.
I'll forward it to you again, but yes, you've had it.
Does it, but it doesn't, we don't have the new form that's going to have any reasons and a description of what
I don't have the new form.
Right, it's in development by the tree commission.
So you'll have the form that the property owner had filled out.
Gary brought it up last month.
Yeah.
Gina said she was going to get it done.
Yeah.
It just, that's not done, or we don't see it yet, so.
Yeah.
So I think it's in process of
Yeah.
Some level.
So we'll wait until we have something to look at before we make any approvals.
Okay.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Tree, I have a question.
Yeah, come on up.
Survey that came home in the water bill?
Okay.
There was an online survey?
About the power line commission?
That was for power line.
Oh.
That was for the, in the, in the last second water bill, it was a survey for removal of the
Correct.
Power lines within the site of the village.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to make a comment about the three minutes.
Yes.
I guess they're recommending that Tom position as Highway Department liaison to the Village Tree Commission be approved, but I don't think that can be done with, with the union regulations. According to our lawyer, Tom can, can go participate with the, with the tree commission on their, on their activities, but he can't be formally deemed the Highway Department liaison as, due to union regulations, which we can ask our attorney Rich on that.
I think we already did, right?
We asked him.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, I'm just, and, and he said
Yeah.
It can't be tied to the tree commission.
If, if you read the meeting minutes, actually, the reasoning behind the trees, why they should be removed is on there. It's in the minutes, it's not on a form.
Okay.
It does say. One's scarred and twisted, trunk is hollow, and
Right, so then we need to go look at
Yeah.
These trees.
Yep.
And then decide, and make a determination on them, right?
And then it says right here, Fennel, pruning is approved. It says they were seeking pruning.
Well, it's recommended for approval.
Right.
By the tree commission.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Now, we should note that they did have the tree planting on Saturday. I wasn't able to be there, I don't
I wasn't either.
Have any
I was there.
Yeah.
I was there, well
How'd it go?
Yeah, it went good. We were done, I don't know how many participants there were, make that count, but we started at nine and were done by 12:30. Was 16 trees throughout the village.
Good.
Between Libbison Street, Chestnut Street, West Chestnut, Route 9, and the library.
Right. Yeah, there was one property owner that didn't want the trees they initially agreed to, so they went, ended up going to
To the library.
To the library.
Yeah.
Four?
Three.
Three, and one was given to the cemetery.
Cemetery.
Okay.
And then the cemetery planning was on Sunday, which I did not participate in.
All right. We're good with that?
Okay.
Anything else? From the Parks and Recs, just wanted to acknowledge that the fence that is shared between the property owner to the north and the Legion Park, Crystal Lake, the village provide the labor and the property owner, Delolio Properties Art and Building, did pay for that fencing that went along that property line. So thank you for, for their cooperation and assistance in making that project happen. Power lines?
Power line committee. The power line committee has continued to send out surveys, which was just recently noted. We sent the last review to everything that was on the north side of Market Street for those zones that went out in the last water, with the last water bills. It's an online survey. I encourage everybody who has received it to take it. We're getting a very good response. As of tonight, we have 325 respondents to the survey. We're starting now to, we're going to set an end date and say when we're going to stop taking in more surveys, because we have to have a solid database then to start reviewing the data with. So thank everybody for participating. Please continue to participate and fill out the survey, and as we're at right now, hopefully next month, we're going to come in with data as a result of the survey, what the survey says.
Okay. I know we had correspondence from Piper Woods, from Montgomery Row about that. Do you want to add that to the
Sure.
Comments for the, you know, when we gather all the comments?
Yes.
I mean
In fact, there's been, there's been several comments dropped in of
Yeah.
Pat's office.
So we're going to compile them all together instead of addressing it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That makes sense. Um, good. Porch Fest, under special request. I don't think we have any paperwork, right Liz?
No, because I wanted to discuss it first.
Come on, come on up. You got to go up there and tell us who you are for tho- for those at home.
Good evening, Liz Mazzarella from Porch Fest. Thank you for all your help and support with our inaugural event. We were blessed with a beautiful day. I've received a lot of correspondence from people in the village who seemed to really enjoy the day. I would love the village's feedback, if there's anything you'd like to share, positive or It's my sense from people I've spoke with that they'd like to make it an annual event, and I would be willing to work towards that. There are some issues with the date. I know that Red Hook expressed some concern because it did fall on hardscrabble day. I don't think anyone knew that hardscrabble was that day. I think it was just a big coincidence, unfortunate coinci- coincidence. So if we do do it again next year, I would make sure it didn't fall on hardscrabble day. I spoke with people in, restaurant owners and some of the shops in town, and people expressed that Sunday would be a better day for the event because that's, they seem to get less traffic that day and do less business that day. So I think Sunday would be a consideration as well. So what am I asking is that I would like to make it an annual event. I will put a application in, an event application in, but I need to secure some dates. And that's really my goal, is to lock in a date and then submit the application. So I believe last time, the village gave me a few dates to choose from. So that's what I'm asking for.
So is, you're going to be in contact with Red Hook, as you said, about hardscrabble day? Do they
I actually called them yesterday and today, but I guess because of the election, they're pretty busy. I wasn't able to get through to anyone, so I do not know when their event is.
Do they always have, is it like the third Saturday, or what's that?
I'm not sh- I'm not sure.
Was this the third Saturday of September?
It was September 17th, is that probably? So, does anyone want to share anything? Did any
Well, I thought we would have a kind of a postmortem, kind of a thing, where we could actually sit together and share it.
Okay.
Not that there was any, it would all be constructive stuff. It was great. I went to the event myself, I totally enjoyed myself, but there were certain, certainly some things that
Sure.
You have to have the first one in order to be able to, to mold and make it, make it better.
Absolutely.
I certainly was an observer, just to be able to sit with you guys and hear what you had to say and get the feedback, and then maybe offer some as well, so.
Absolutely.
This is probably not the setting
Okay.
But I'd love to sit in on a meeting, you know, that you guys want to have.
Okay, we actually did have a postmortem with the committee. So I guess, I think maybe a separate, you know, I wouldn't ask the committee to come. I mean, I'd be happy to sit down with anyone.
Or someone, I mean, we do a couple of those kinds of
Yeah, we probably don't need the whole board, just a small workshop and then they could present whatever the changes were.
Okay.
If you bring us the date, then, you know, we'll check it with other things that are going on. So that would be part of the event application.
Okay, that's fine, but I think last year you gave me some dates, because obviously that we want to pick a date that doesn't conflict with other village events.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, if you want to work with Patchy Hills
Okay.
The master calendar, and then
Sure.
You know, if there's no other major things on that Saturday, then, you know, you can pick the one that works for
And you're fine with Saturday or Sunday?
Or Sunday.
And, right.
Yeah.
Possibly Sunday.
Yeah.
Right, and I also, I want to speak with the fairgrounds to see
Yeah, so those
What dates they have available as well.
The big, the big things to put together, and then
Right.
We probably won't have, I would assume, the date would be a big problem for this board, assuming there was no conflict with another event on that time.
Did you hear from the mayor in Red Hook? I heard that, no?
I have not heard from Mayor Blandell.
Okay.
Why was he upset?
That's what I heard, but
I've, I've seen him since then, and he didn't, he didn't mention it.
Good. I think, you know, because, you know, it ended at five. Their big musical event is in the evening. I heard it went well. I knew people that were at Porch Fest and went to that and said it was crowded and fun, and, so I didn't think it was a conflict, but I can understand why they would think that it might be, and
And it was purely a coincidence, was
It was, and, you know, absolutely.
I mean, maybe it would, if you can get ahold of them, I mean, maybe it was a positive, it turned out to be positive for both of them. We don't know that, I guess, right?
Well, I know I spoke with a few shop owners in the village, and they said that typically hardscrabble day for them in Rhinebeck was not a good day, and a number of people said it's the best they, they've ever had. There's a couple people that will say otherwise.
You can't please everybody 100% of the time.
Yeah, I know, I know, but
Next year, would you anticipate more growth?
I do anticipate more growth. I do want to keep it contained, though. I don't want it to become too big, and I think it could, I was surprised at how big it, you know, was this year.
Was it more than 400?
Yeah, I think
That you said?
I think so. I think the weather was a big factor. It was a gorgeous day, and people really seemed to enjoy it. We were able to give a, we exceeded our budget. People were very generous, and we were able to give a sizable donation, I felt, to the Rhinebeck Park Fund. So we have given them a contribution, and we kept a little nest egg for hopefully next year. So thank you.
Great.
So I will reach out to you, and we'll set a date to sit down. Great. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Liz. Thank you.
So we had another request, a peddler's permit for Center Claus.
Center Claus.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, your comment, I thought, was appropriate. That said, we should, they should check with Cinder Claus to see if there's any requirements or how they want to handle it, because it really is their event and their day, right?
Right, and they had specifically, we had this discussion last year, we had had vendors, peddlers just kind of pop up on the street. You know, we had people selling like glow-in-the-dark gadgets, and we had a guy selling pretzels out of a CVS cart with charcoal in it, and, you know, we kind of made an on-the-spot decision that we weren't going to wrestle these people off the street last year, but in our postmortem with Cinder Claus, they said, well, we don't really want, you know, outside vendors because they want to be able to give back to the local businesses and a lot of non-for-profits set up tables. I think most of the local nonprofits have something out there. They got the Boy Scouts and the Soccer League, and I can't even think of all the other ones, but, so.
Yeah, it's usually handled, yeah, no, it's usually handled under, it's their, their event.
Right.
It's Cinder, it's Cinder Claus's event.
Yeah, this thing is up to them.
Yeah.
So, so what we, you know, one thing I just made a note of, we haven't had our pre-planning for that.
We're working on that.
Okay, so, you know, we probably, I mean, it's less than a month away.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can talk to Gina about that. I would suspect that this meeting's going to be in the next week or so.
Tried to set it up for tonight, couldn't do it.
Okay.
It's going to be next, next week, one night.
Okay.
Because they had their kickoff, Cinder Claus had a kickoff just recently, and I saw, so
And they got another event on Friday, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's a good point, we need to
So there aren't any, right now, the plan is the same as it was for last year, so that's, you know, in terms of public safety and parking, and all those things have, have not changed. That's why there's been less of a, less of a urgency to have our pre-planning meeting. I did speak to the Department of Health about the lavatory facilities that would be required, and once it was explained to them that, you know, we don't have 10,000 people from nine in the morning until seven in the evening, it's only about an hour, hour and a half, so that they're comfortable with the facilities that are available, which was a potential big hang-up after last year.
Right.
So we'll refer this to Cinder Claus.
Thank you.
So, good. Next, we have the resolution for the election, establishing the election for March 21st, 2017. That would be a village election. There will be three seats open, a two-year term for mayor, and two two-year terms for trustee, and one four-year term for village justice. I may have said three seats, but I stand corrected, it's four. So I could make a motion to approve this resolution as drafted by the village clerk.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So then, Pat, you'll take care of the informational notice when the time, when the time comes?
No.
What's the date that we have to?
I have to, I have to do the notice now that the, that those seats are available.
Okay. What's the date that we have to have that done by?
What?
Was it?
The resolution, I think it's like November 22nd or 21st or something, so
So it had to be at this meeting?
Right.
Okay. And we have a request from trustee Fox to attend a government innovation conference in Albany, and she's requesting, there's no seminar fee, but she requests $175 for travel plus hotel. And, it's just one day, right?
I thought I saw there was an evening event the night before, and then the conference the next day, but I'm not
What's the date?
I don't know the details.
It says November 18th.
Next, next week? Next Friday day? Or Thursday into Friday? Do you know by any chance, Pat, what the 25 is? Is it?
I think she has travel plus hotel, so I can only
So the hotel at 150?
Fifty and the travel 25.
Okay.
Well, I'm just questioning why the hotel. I mean, when I first became a trustee, we had to go to a conference in Syracuse, Wayne and I, and we, it was a one-day thing. We drove up and back one day and that's Syracuse, not Albany. And we also paid for our own gas, but.
Oh, it's only in Albany?
Yeah, it's in Albany.
Interstate plus.
And it's one day.
So I think this is the first one we've had. We did budget money for training for board members and employees the last couple of years, but I don't think we've had, uh, had a board member that has, has gone to a, um, a conference like this yet, so.
Meeting with expert on sharing services will help with prepping IMA for shared services grant. So that's on Saturday?
That's, can I interject?
Yeah.
The conference is on Saturday, but it goes from like eight in the morning to whatever in the afternoon. But I guess she had reached out to the person who was giving the conference and he wanted to meet with her the night before because there was some sort of event and he wanted to talk to her then. So that's why I think the evening, because, so that she can meet with this guy.
That's what I, I think I remember that, because there's an e, there's been emails that explain this.
Right, there was an email that said she wanted to go meet with the guy, somebody the evening before, right?
That's what I remember, yeah.
Yeah. Now, the IMA is done, correct? Are you still working on that with?
The IMA for the highway shared services is not complete. Yeah, for, if, if you're talking about the highway or the.
That's what this is about, right?
Yeah, well, this is for, I, the way I read it, this was for shared services in general, not specific shared services.
Oh, okay. I thought she was talking about prepping the IMA for this grant that she's working on.
The way I read the emails, this was a process to work on how to effectively work on shared services.
Okay.
In general, right? And that's what the conference was about. It's not a specific meeting about the highway shared services or anything else.
So do we want to wait until December when we're ready to disperse the, you know, address the expenses? I did talk to Gina today and, you know, suggested that she could stop by here and give us an explanation of this so that we could all hear it. I figured there'd be.
Can't wait till December because it's on the 18th.
This is November.
She's gonna go regardless, right?
And disperse of the, of the payment in December?
Yeah, because then we'll know exactly what the cost of the hotel and. I don't know that we, I mean, I, we don't know what the 25, I mean, she asked for $25 for meals or?
I don't know.
I don't know. So maybe we, she could give us that.
Turn in her receipts.
Right. And then we can either approve or disapprove the receipts, right? Can't you do that, Ellen?
Yeah. So we just wait? Does that make sense or you want to, what do you guys want to do?
I'm fine with that.
I, I think it sounds to me, from what I read, it sounds like a good event to go to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an event, but I don't know why you have to stay overnight to talk to a guy.
As what Pat said, you're gonna drag up the night before and then meet and then.
How many people are going to the event? Is the guy talking to everybody or just her?
I have no idea.
I mean, that's what we have to know, we have to know these things.
I have no idea.
Pat, do we have, um?
I dropped to Albany and back today.
Yeah, it's not, it's not afar, it's 50 miles away.
I do know.
Do we have a, um, a policy, you know, like company I work for, when you travel, you can't, you can have a limit to what you spend, like on hotels? Do we have that or does it go by some federal rate?
No.
Like, there's a federal per diem for, is that how?
Per person? No, we've never had anything per person.
Okay.
The only thing we had is what was budgeted that, when you set the budget, which was X amount of dollars per person for, for training. That's all that there was.
All right.
So it seems that that's the way they want to spend their portion of the budget and that's probably what we could do.
Yeah, well, normally when the departments do it, the department head or liaison would approve the attendance of training, but now it's a board member, so, you know, it's the first time we've done it, but it would be the board would approve it, so.
Well, I'm in favor of somebody going to the event, regardless of how to get there, they should go.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the travel or the hotel up to $150.
It's on here.
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. I'm not in favor of the hotel. We're not breaking it apart, we're just, we're not breaking this apart. I thought we were gonna wait and see an explanation from her.
Well, that's what the discussion piece of it was before we voted.
Right. Okay.
So the vote's three to one.
Yep. The special request form. Did Rich look at this yet?
I've sent it to him two or three times. I have not heard back.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the form and begin utilization of the form immediately for all special events and other requests outside of, I'm sorry, not events, all special requests that do not fall under the special event, uh, request application.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, let me just, so where is, where are the rates that are associated with some of these?
We haven't had set rates.
Okay.
That was up to the board's discretion.
Right.
I mean, a lot of them are free.
Right.
Since their coin drops and.
What I did add on this form was the other box which you had asked and then the police department and fire department approval.
Right.
On that form.
I think this is very good.
Yeah, I mean, we can always revise it if we have to, but at least it gives us a starting point and something to work with.
Thank you.
For the time being.
Okay. Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
Now we have to vote.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Pat, for putting that form together for us.
You're welcome.
Minutes from September 13th and October 11th? Anybody got any comments on those?
They were all emailed, if I remember correctly, right?
Correct.
Yes, that's why they're not in.
Right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted via email.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Are we supposed to talk about this? Water thing? No, okay. This thing?
Yeah, I told them no. We'll just do it.
That's, yeah, that's just, I think you were just sending it out to let us know.
Okay.
Do we have comments from the public? Okay, come on up.
Hello, my name is Colleen Mooney and my partner, Mark Sutton, and I live at Three Slate Dock Road in the town of Rhinebeck. Our property is adjacent to 76 Slate Dock Road, which is the water treatment facility owned by the village of Rhinebeck. We purchased our home in 2002 and in 2003, we requested a variance from the town of Rhinebeck to build a deck, a rear deck, which would be two feet from the rear of our property line. For the variance, we used a property site map from, that we received from Jess Moffett, who was the owner of the property. Um, he's also the construction engineer for the water treatment plant. And the Duchess, we also used the Duchess County tax property map to show where our property line was. The planning board, the town of Rhinebeck planning board did a site visit. There were no structures adjacent to our property and there are no comment, there were no comments from the public regarding our request. Therefore, the variance was granted in 2003. In August of this year, we commissioned Robert Campbell to survey our property. The survey showed that a property of our deck extends over the boundary line onto the water, into the water treatment plant property. After pointing out the discrepancy, Mr. Campbell suggested that we get in touch with the village mayor, uh, which we did and, um, as the property is in the town of Rhinebeck, uh, Mr. Tortorella directed us to the town of Rhinebeck zoning officer, Ron, and, um, and, and, oh, Jesus, thank you. It's his hard name. On his recommendation, we have scheduled a pre-meeting with the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board for the 21st of November. One of the conditions of our request, um, of that request is that we submit a letter of authorization from the village of Rhinebeck, which is our neighbor, that they would be willing to grant us this adjustment. And we're here tonight to present our request and answer any questions that you might have regarding a neighborly resolution to this. The lot line adjustment that is being, um, suggested is a .03 acres, uh, which is about 1,500 square feet and that would allow us to have our deck remain where it is.
So what?
I had the survey here and also photos if anybody just wants to see the site.
Yeah, I mean, we've spoken a couple of times about this and the issue, which I've already explained to you and talked to our attorney, this isn't the first time we've had this type of situation, not where there's a deck built on village property, but where somebody want, wants a lot line adjustment and acquire property for the village.
Excuse me.
So we, um, being as publicly owned property, we cannot give that land away. That land has to be deemed surplus by the village board and we would only do that under the recommendation of our engineer. So the question, um, came up in this particular instance, there were some issues with the variance. I believe the variance was 2003 and in the variance, the last stipulation stated that the, the deck had to be completed within one year and I think the CO was issued in 2006, so three years later.
The whole, you know, we did the deck within the year and then we were doing all of a sudden work in that, so we got like a final CO.
I mean, that's the, the legal, potential legal hang-up. So now if, if the town has to decide, their town planning board has to decide if that variance is still, is still in place or if you need a new variance. And then the question becomes, are they gonna give you a new variance, which the, the piece that, the lot line adjustment that you're requesting now still leaves only two feet?
Right.
So are they gonna give you a new two-foot variance or are they gonna say, no, it has to be 10, no, it has to be 25? So that's was my recommendation, is find out what the town is going to require because if you need, let's say they will not give you a variance, you need 25, then the lot line adjustment would have to be much bigger. And there's no sense of doing that twice. So we might as well get that line right the first time.
I, I'll say this, we did meet with them and we talked through it and we did meet with the, all the, all the people we could without this pre-meeting. And their, I'll say, initial reaction is that if we can get this lot line adjustment, they would go ahead and approve the variance as we have had it since, right, the two-foot variance since, again, the deck has been there for 15 years.
And it's also, and the deck goes to the edge of the ledge and, you know, we fall off.
Right.
So it's, it's just kind of a natural boundary as well. So I don't know if you want to see anything tonight, pictures or?
So you said it was 15 feet, so what, what is it foot-wise? Your deck goes onto the village property by how far?
You have a picture.
Well, I mean, roughly, is it?
Twelve feet.
Twelve?
It's really.
At one end it's twelve feet and the other end it's about six.
It's a really odd-shaped lot, the way the lot was designed.
I thought, I mean, when they make mistakes like this, it's usually a couple of inches or foot or foot and a half or something.
I, I think everyone would have, I think it's because of the topography of the, of the land when there was, you know, it was empty. Like I said, it just, it sort of looks at this natural ledge boundary and everyone thought it went on the end of that ledge, so that's really the, the square of line.
There have been no surveys there for.
Right, there were no surveys of, of, of our land, there were, had been no prior surveys and our understanding from, um, Bob Campbell, who tried to get a survey of the village land, that there really aren't any good surveys of the village property. So, like I said, at, at the time, everybody, you know, bad assumptions, but.
You know, for, uh, you know, the water treatment plant.
John Fenton has one because we've been working on the boundaries for where the lagoon is and all that kind of stuff, so I do know that there's a survey map.
I think, I don't think it, well, I won't say yea or nay, I don't, I know there are some survey maps, but I think the area where we are, which is sort of on the other side, it's not clear there, but it may, it may be, but, um, I'm not gonna say yea or nay. Well, since we didn't look at it, we just took Bob's.
I know we gave some to the engineer when we were working that cleaning the lagoon to find out if we had enough room to stage equipment and everything on the village property to do that staging. Again, we were working on the other side.
Right.
Not on your side.
Right.
And our focus was on the other side.
Right, so that's.
And we had a dig for it and we, it was, it was, they were difficult to find.
Yes, and that's what Bob, Bob was saying, they were difficult to find and at least on our side, he didn't think they were very clear. Not gonna say yea or nay, um, I think he did a great job for us, but, um, we're here.
If needed now, I think you really know where the lot line is, so it's not a matter of needing a map now.
Right, we don't need it at this point in time. We, I think we're.
It's a matter of determining exactly the piece that you need and then getting a.
Yes.
Appraisal of that piece to determine what we can legally sell it for.
Okay. And what, what would we need to do or what would to maybe perhaps move this forward? Like I said, with the planning board is, it's sort of like, you know, I realize it's almost a catch-22, but we need the, your.
Yeah, I mean.
Tentative, I guess, agreement, uh, some agreement that you would be willing to sell us that piece of land. We realize it would be a sale.
We have to declare a surplus, so and make it available for everybody.
We'd have to check the legality of that. I don't know exactly how that piece works. But we need, um, the engineer to tell us that we don't need that, that piece based on that. And then, so that would be, the cost of that would be on you guys and then the appraisal, the independent appraisal of that piece would be also on you guys.
Understood.
And then we could move forward with the legal filings to actually make it legal.
Okay.
And then we'd have to re, the water department property would need to be re-marked out in terms of.
Right, that would be part of the agreement.
Right.
That would be part of the agreement that we understand and the deeds would need to be filed and we realize that would be.
What does the deck look like if it was brought back into compliance?
It would basically.
Well, actually, the house is not, is within the setback.
No, I know, but if the deck came back 12 feet.
It would have to come back.
It would basically, it would be removed.
Because the house was built prior to the zoning, right?
Is that, there are some discussions about that according to the variance.
The house is within the 25-foot setback, so there's no room for a deck.
Oh, okay.
So that was just the house.
When we bought it. And, yeah, this is the side facing, actually, the water treatment plant is our neighbor just about, just about all sides. And now that's the deck. And here is the property line, the boundary. So it is kind of the end of the deck. And then if we go further, let's see, that's just from the deck. Here you get an idea of the verticality of the ledge.
Yep.
Right.
So it's not really impinging on that other land that is the water treatment plant.
Right.
All right?
Okay.
So to try to avoid this catch-22, can we just tell them we'll go along with the town planning board? I mean, are, what if they're, if they're saying they want them to buy two, two-foot variance?
I guess the question is, what would it look like if, you know, what's the cost difference of a two-foot, a, a two-foot allowance versus a 25-foot allowance?
Well, I mean, that would be borne by us, so it doesn't really matter. I don't know if it matters to you.
But does the engineer, engineer's determination that two feet might be acceptable, but four feet might, uh?
Right. Well, let's.
So, wait, maybe, do we start with the engineer and just have him look in general?
Do you have your own, I mean, we've been working with, um, Mark?
No, we have, the village has an appointed engineer.
An appointed engineer?
Yeah, that was.
Okay, all right, we just get to help, yes, okay.
Yep.
So should we get in touch with him or?
No, we will do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have, I believe we have a copy of the map, still John Fenton has it.
Did you have?
Yep.
John has it?
Yeah.
We made copies, we didn't know if he distributed them, he made copies, we.
So Stan Tech would determine if the land was useful or that deemed surplus for us as far as the operation of the plant, or we'd ask them to comment on that. So that would be our first step, right?
Right.
And then from that point, then we can start to pursue all the other things.
Yeah.
Right.
Just saying, if, if we didn't need 25 feet of it, then you wouldn't need the town.
The variance. I'd rather have the variance, you know.
I think we would still need to make the lot, minor lot line adjustment. We wouldn't perhaps need the variance, but we would still need the planning board to approve the change in the lot line adjustment. So one way or another.
Yeah.
We have to, because of the districts we're all in, we have to, mind changes, even for the mi, it would be a minor lot line adjustment, but we would still have to go to the planning board to get that. So either way, we have to go there, whether it's with the variance or without the variance.
Well, the variance would come from the zoning board appeals, another step, so.
Right, so they, you know, we did talk through that, but that's really the key. So it's really getting this pre-planning meeting to say, I guess that, that's what we were hoping for, that we could at that pre-planning meeting, say, yes, we're in agreement that it's, it could be sold.
A reasonable solution.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think, maybe this board might agree contingent upon the recommendation of the engineer.
Your engineer, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so we can tell.
Yeah, yeah, we're not.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
I don't know.
Would we have any idea whether the engineer might be able to make that determination?
Well, for a matter of minutes, do you want, is that a motion for minutes? Okay.
So Gary, they just asked if, when, you can get in contact with Stan Tech and probably get him out here. So Gary, they just asked if, when, you can get in contact with STANTEC and probably get him out here?
Yeah, well, I'll make the contact.
Okay.
So timeframe, probably a week, just, and what's your, what's your town meeting?
I don't know what their, excuse me, I don't know what their schedule is.
Right, I'm just saying.
So I cannot commit to their schedule. All I can tell you is we'll make contact and ask them. And if John has all the information, we can work with John to collect the information and they can have what they need. If they need more, we'll have to go after.
The pre-planning meeting is the 21st of November. And the documents that would have to be put together, which would include this authorization or pre-author, would be the following Monday, which would be the 28th. So that's really kind of.
Offer the following.
For the, right, for, well, no, when they actually have to have the package together so that they could at least talk about it at the December meeting.
Well, we should be able to have something by then.
Okay, that would be great.
Did you say your engineer was Mark Kraminsky?
Yes, well, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So that, at the December meeting, you can make a decision.
So when he's aware, you know, so we've asked him to help us through this, but everybody just.
Who was this? I'm sorry.
Mark Kraminsky is there, actually.
Okay.
Alright, great.
We really appreciate it.
Great.
As you can see.
Yeah, I mean, it's a long way back, I'm sure.
It's a good big change. We thought we did everything right, but.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Anybody got anything else? No?
No.
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session, discuss the employment history of an individual employee.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.